Here, City Manager for Morgan Hill. Thank you for joining us on our weekly town hall. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on business recovery. I do want to just make one announcement on testing first before we proceed to talk about business recovery, and that is that we just pushed out some information yesterday, I believe, as a matter of fact, just to let the community know that coronavirus testing is easy and it's free. And so our website has the information, but we have a community testing site that's available in South County at Christopher High. And so, you know, no longer, you know, is it difficult or impossible to get a test? You know, before you had to have it show symptoms or be exposed. And so now you can, you can go and get tested regardless of insurance, regardless of immigration status. And so go to our website for more information. And there also is a testing site at DePaul, which is a little bit more restrictive to the county healthcare system. But the county is really encouraging people to get tested. And so I wanted to make sure that this, the attendees were aware of that. So as I mentioned, tonight, we want to focus our town hall on business recovery. And last night at the council meeting, we brought to council our economic development work plan and focusing on business recovery. And so I'm going to turn it over to Edith Ramirez in a moment. She's our economic development director. And the question that she asked last night to our council is, how best can we serve our community during this economic crisis? You know, what is the role of the city? What is the role of the city during this time? How can we best help our businesses be ready to open so that when the green light is there, we're ready to go, you know, and not just one sector, not just one area in town, but how can we best help our community? And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Edith.
Thank you, Christina. Hello, everyone. Well, we covered quite a bit of ground last night. I'm not going to go over the presentation with you. I won't make you listen to that again. I will put the link on the chat. So if you didn't see the presentation, if you didn't get the staff report, you can see it. The purpose of tonight is really to hear from you. I think that I should start by saying that we don't really know what's the right thing for everyone. We recognize that the need is tremendous for folks, but it ranges depending on the industry and the size of business and how equipped they were to be online. And it's all over the place. With that, as a city, we're trying to figure out what is the best thing that we, the city, can do to support you, the business community? What, what are the things that are within the power of the city that we can do? Also recognizing that the city is going through, through our own financial pains as a business, we as a city, we too are being impacted by the loss of sales tax and TOT tax and everything else. So we ourselves are going through our journey with making, you know, recommendations to weather this storm. And Christina can, can chime in on the budget process and what have you. But with that, I think that what I want to do right now is welcome your thoughts via the chat or raise your hand. We will call you. You can unmute your mic. And again, the purpose is to hear from you. So with that, who has an idea that you want to share with us? And we're listening.
So Edith, we got our first question through the Q and A, and it's directed at Chief Palsgrove. How do you feel about cannabis retail?
Well, that's a loaded question. I feel that if the voters voted in and it comes to Morgan Hill, then we will do what we need to, to make sure that the community stays safe and we regulate what we need to. And if the city decides that, or the voters decide that it's not right for Morgan Hill, then we'll go that route as well.
So if I could just also just kind of give a background for the attendees on and sort of where, where we're at with cannabis. So we brought to our voters the question of if cannabis, recreational cannabis were to be allowed in the city of Morgan Hill, should it be taxed? And the answer to that question from our voters was yes, it should be taxed. And so then it became a decision at the council level to decide whether or not to allow retail activities in town. And so there were several meetings, both at the planning commission as well as the council level to discuss whether or not to have cannabis. And after much deliberation, it was decided that we would not move forward with retail cannabis. There is a petition, a process underway that could put that question to the voters, but that's yet to be determined at this point in time. And so, so now the only thing that is allowed in Morgan Hill and any city for that matter in California is delivery. So deliveries can be brought into Morgan Hill. However, no retail cannabis is allowed, recreational cannabis in Morgan Hill. We have a question that says, how on this site right now? Not sure what that's related to. If the person asking that question, I'm not sure what that relates to. It says, how on this site right now?
So again, for the folks that are on the call, this is our chance. We want to hear from you. I know that last night, the meeting went really late. There were quite a few that stayed to the very, very end of the meeting, and we appreciated the comments that were shared. The council, we provided from economic development, we have our existing work program that is guided by the economic blueprint. We have our temporary work program that is kind of doing what we can right now during the crisis to support the businesses. And then we have a work program that we are proposing on the things that we think can help as we move forward. And, and those sort of activities are a range of activities that support small businesses throughout the community, things like a shop local campaign, things that would allow the restaurants to spill out onto the street, things like doing Monterey Road street improvements, looking at activities like city improving services and getting out of the way to make it easier so that retailers and restaurants can push out onto the street and not make it so expensive or hard for them to get an encroachment permit or what have you. So we, the city are recommending, we look at where can we provide flexibility right now? Signage, parking, again, permits. And then the, the activities that we recommended that are somewhat focused on how to create an environment where people feel safe coming back out and engaging. How do we create a place that is, that feels not only safe, but is attractive, that has some place making, some activities? So that's what we're thinking about. And we are based on the, on the council's feedback yesterday. We are going to come back at the next meeting with a work program that, that essentially details how we're going to move forward.
And this is Michelle. I just wanted to let the participants know, you, the Q and A is a wonderful tool. You can take your questions and it's nice because we can read them to the group and ask them. You can also raise your hand and we can call on you to speak. And for those participants that are calling in, rather than through the app, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And we would love to hear from you.
Okay, so we have a question that says, beyond what the city can do, is there anything we as community members can do to support emerging from the sheltered place besides buying local?
You know, I, I think that, that is a great question because I think it's going to take all of us, right? We need to support the community. I mean, again, I'm thinking about the city as, as much as we're working hard to provide the level of service the community has. The conversation yesterday before the economic development conversation, there was a budget conversation and there was a dialogue about, are we going to need community members to come out and help us maintain parks and trails? And what does that look like? Is that feasible? So I do think that, and certainly the rest of my teammates can, can chime in on how they think the community can come out. But certainly when it comes down to activation of business areas, I do think that it will require bringing out the community and, and doing it in a way that we can afford it, volunteering, donating their time and talents.
Farmer's Market, thoughts on bringing that back in or maybe expanding it to have more sales tents? Perhaps bringing the farmers more than once a week and maybe using a larger area like the school parking lot, live oak perhaps? And so we do have a farmer's market and that is done weekly. And Chris Gioni, Public Services Director is on, as is Tony Ulo. And there have been some discussions about locations. I don't know if either Chris or Tony wanted to chime in related to the farmer's market and different considerations.
Yeah, and I know Chief Palsgrove may have comments as well because his team's been monitoring the situation. A couple of weeks ago, the farmer's market upgraded the, basically put like striping down through the parking area where they are currently at to see if that could help support the increased social distancing. And I know at least initially it was successful. I haven't had a recent report out myself. We have talked about possibilities of, of alternate sites. The farmer's market organizers do prefer to stay at that location.
Farmer's markets to work, you know, we depend on those farmers to be able to, to make that viable. I know that the downtown association has tried farmer's markets on different times of the week and, and they were doing it, I think it was on a Thursday night. Didn't quite pencil out for the farmer's market to be able to come out. I think that all those are great ideas that we should consider and, and see if, if it works out for the vendors.
If you're considering closing Monterey downtown, how are you going to address the impacts to surrounding residential streets? Chris?
So when we did the pilot project five years ago, initially, we found that most of the traffic did move to, the traffic that moved off Monterey moved to Butterfield Boulevard. But I think, I know our city engineer, traffic flows like waters to, goes to the path of least resistance. So if there, if there, if there's less lanes on Monterey, that traffic will move. But that was what Butterfield was designed for, is to move that traffic.
And so we're going to have our next town hall focused on that discussion and then we'll be bringing that forward on June 3rd to council. We have a Chris G., which ironically is the same initial, same name and same last name initial as our Chris Gioni. But this is a member of the public saying, by the way, Morgan Hill staff, I posted some great drone pictures of Morgan Hill on Nextdoor lately. If you'd like to use them for your background on Zoom, please let me know. Thank you for that offer. Michelle, does Chris live in a field? I'm worried always outside at the meetings, maybe give him a raise. I will email the manager on this. That's great. Yeah, Chris, actually his background right now is, is City Hall, our civic campus. But thank you for the, for the laugh. Chris likes to hike and so his backgrounds are beautiful hillsides of Morgan Hill. He claims they're other places, but I think they're all Morgan Hill. Midtown Sacramento does this on a regular basis. It's doable. I, I'm wondering if that's related to the farmer's market?
Or the lane reduction, probably.
Okay, okay. Okay, and now we have Chris Gangai. Hopefully I'm saying that right on Nextdoor. Thank you. And I got a thumbs up on that. Thank you, Chris. What are the major, this is from Nick. What are the major hurdles being studied by the city with respect to the road diet?
So at, at this point, what we are planning to bring back for conversation is the data that we, that we were able to collect through the trial. So we have, we, we know what has changed since that point and we know that many things have not changed. So what we're really going to start the discussion with, with the council and with the community is what were the results and what were, what were the things we, we learned as well as what are some things that are different for us that would, would make it different this time around? And, and that's really what we're looking at. We, we have not started any separate traffic studies at this time. And at this time, it'd actually be semi-difficult to do something real time anyways with changes from COVID-19. So we're going to look at the data we've collected from the past to start.
Okay, so throwing that question back to the attendees, you know, what can we, what should we as a city be doing to help businesses open back up? Help with the trust factor, knowing that if you're going into a business in Morgan Hill, you're going to be comfortable going into that business? Any thoughts from this group?
Yeah. So there's a couple of questions coming up, and I also see that there's people raising their hand on, on the chat as well, Christina.
Great. So if we go to the chat for a moment and we have David Dindak on, so if we can go ahead and unmute, let's see, Michelle, if you wouldn't mind unmuting David? All right.
Hi guys. You got me?
Yes.
I thank you so much and thanks for holding, holding these meetings. I am David Dindak, I'm on the board of the Downtown Association. And my wife and I own the Bubbles. We run the Bubbles at Fifth and Monterey. And I wanted to bring up a couple of things, you know, I'm speaking only on behalf of or with the downtown businesses and restaurants. We feel that we're the heart and soul of the community and, you know, we come together and do a lot of things, putting on events and so forth. And one thing that you guys have been talking about is expanding, going outside and serving outside, whether it be retail and/or restaurants. We had a meeting today and talked a little bit about the Complete Streets Project. And there's been a discussion going back and forth. We're currently doing a survey and we're going to send it out to all the members to get an overall feel of how the membership would accept the road diet. But another thought that I had was, is there consideration to possibly closing off side streets and maybe for half a block? I've been doing a lot of research, not a lot. I've been doing a lot of Googling and seeing what other cities are doing. And cities that cannot, because of thoroughfares, close down a major thoroughfare, they're moving to the side streets. And if we, you know, closed, I don't know, half of fourth on both, both sides, half of fifth, all of third, because that's something that we could consider doing. As I look at my downtown Morgan Hill map, most of the businesses have some access to a side street to some degree, and it wouldn't take up a lot of parking if we only took X number of properties, like 120 feet or whatever that might be. So just a thought there. What are your thoughts there?
Chris, do you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, so I think, and we've talked about this before, but I think there's definitely opportunities we can, we can look at. The struggle we have on some of the, on most of the side streets through downtown, and you've proposed something a little different with like one way and closing one half of the street, but closing the full street is, we have so many residents and businesses that their driveways and access front onto the roads. So we, our city council has actually spent a lot of time developing policies for the use of third street and those side streets to balance the needs of the businesses with the residents or the businesses that have vehicle access. So we've tried to do the best there, but that's obviously something that can continue to be discussed.
Sure, even if we close one lane on, on one of those, all of third street could be closed because we have the promenade. But closing one lane on the, on the fourth and the fifth and possibly allowing places like Trail, Dustin Will and Craft Roots, they have tables along their north and south walls and then use their parking lot for dining as well. Yeah, cuts down on parking, but we've always said, we don't have a parking, our opinion is, we don't have a parking problem in Morgan Hill. We have a walking problem. People don't want to park over at the train station and walk that three to four blocks. People are so used to Morgan Hill being so small. I've been here 30 some years and we're so used to parking in front of the place where we want to go. But, you know, in these times when we need to get outside, we need to get tables outside and retail outside, maybe it wouldn't be such a far walk from the, the train station. So that's my thoughts there.
Yeah.
And I don't want to take up all the time for the meeting, but that's what we're thinking to it. This is such a fluid thing where from day to day, things change. And at some point, they're going to say, okay, you guys could open up and six feet apart on tables, we need you outside. And that's where we'd like to be ready to, just to pull the trigger and go.
Okay, thank you, David. Next question from Chris G. Speaking of traffic, is there any chance we can get some patrol on East Main and Butterfield? There's constant drag racing starting at Main until the next light. Any chance to get some type of speed traps or something to slow folks down? Chief?
Yeah, traffic's one of our biggest concerns amongst the community. And there's a couple of things that we do to verify the traffic problems. We'll use our volunteers in policing. They'll go out there and work radar gun and report their stats back to the police department. And then our motor team will follow out there and pull over cars, issue either citations or provide them with education. We could put out our radar trailer out there. In some cases where we need to verify how bad the problem is, we'll use a metro count, put some pipes across the lanes and that gives us the amount of cars traveled and the speed that's happening on that road. And then we will go back out there and conduct some radar enforcement. But specific to this problem needing, we would need to know the date and time of when this is happening and how often. And we will get it on the list either to put out a radar trailer or to have our units, our traffic team work the area, being that our volunteers in policing are currently not working during the COVID time. But yeah, if you could send me the date and times of when this is happening in between, then I will pass that on to the motor team.
Thank you, Chief. Our next question, since businesses are only curbside in delivery and not all businesses are capable of delivery, can the city help create a local delivery service that businesses can share? Edith?
I was going to ask Chris. You know, I saw that question and I thought, you know, delivery services, there are already great delivery services out there. And certainly doing something like that, my, my sincere reaction is that this is not something that the city knows how to do, would be in a position to do, that it would be cost effective to do. There's just better ways that the private sector can do that and fill that gap. So that's, that's my thought.
Thank you, Edith. Next question, farmer's markets, events, et cetera. Look at their policies. They do a good job with it. Yep, nice comment. We live in the area west of Monterey and we see an increase in both the volume and the speed of the traffic on streets such as Hale, Peak and DeWitt. Not everyone uses Butterfield. When Monterey is closed for events such as Mushroom, Mardi Gras, traffic on the west side of town should also be looked at. Thank you. How will the city support the businesses and restaurants that are not located in downtown? Will they be allowed to move out into parking lots in order to increase their seating? Edith?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So while downtown gets a lot of attention, our policies are really intended to go across the board for all businesses. Some of the challenges is that depending on where the business is located at, they have to follow and they have to work within the rules and regulations of their shopping center. If a business is inside a shopping center, then they have to work with the, their landlords. If, if the business, say, is on Monterey Street or their, their business faces the public right of way, then absolutely, the, the rules and regulations that we're looking at would and could apply to them. What the city is looking at right now is again, as we expect the businesses are going to go figure out where they need to like push out to. We on the city are looking at the things that we need to do to expedite their encroachment permit and how to get them squared away as soon as possible. So yes, businesses all over the city.
Thank you, Edith. To create an environment of comfort and safety for the community, can we use a simple campaign of businesses and customers acting safely? I know many will come out as soon as the sheltered place is removed, but I know many people that are really afraid of exposure to COVID-19. Yes, that's a, that's a really good comment, a good thought, you know? And part of this is just that, that feeling of safety and trust when walking into a business, you know, that all the right safety protocols and cleaning protocols are, are in place. The Santa Clara County has now required employers, businesses to ensure that their, that their team, their staff wears facial coverings and that those coming into the businesses also wear masks or face coverings. In addition to that, businesses are required to post how they are meeting the required social distancing and other protocols. Edith, anything else that you would want to add to that?
In the newsletter that we send out, there's a link to the county's recommendations on how even pushing out to the curbside, what is required. And I do totally agree that this is going to be an issue of who can do it better, right? Who, how can we regain the trust as a community? And to that end, visit Morgan Hill, which is a tourism nonprofit organization in the city. When they heard that the local restaurants were having a hard time getting access to masks, they went ahead and made an investment to buy masks and gloves and they started delivering those to the hospitality industry. So that is one of the small ways that our partners are stepping out to say, hey, if you don't, if you don't have masks, we, we can help you go buy them and acquire them. I do agree that, that that strategy is something that we should look at, is that campaign for our business community so that we can have visitors come out and shop again.
Great, thank you, Edith. Nick asks, can you please clarify if the Monterey Road Extension Project is being presented as a bridging solution or a permanent decision? Edith and/or Chris?
I could start. I, I think we are proposing, at this point, we're going to be discussing what happened in the past as well as some of the other alternatives as we bring it back for the council to review it. And then we're going to be asking for direction from the council on where they want us to go. So we are not proposing an exact format, but we'll give you, we'll, we'll be providing the, the previous format we used as well as other items that have been discussed in the past and reviewed.
Edith, anything further? Okay. Do the businesses understand that the city is here waiting for them to give input? They are under extreme stress and maybe looking at emails, social media, et cetera. Door-to-door visits might be more effective. Oh, yeah, I mean, I think this, that just Kristen's trying to convey that we're, we're wanting to get information from the, from the community on your ideas and how we can help. Chris says, you guys are all great. Are you hiring by any chance? I've got event coordination background. I'll ping you on LinkedIn. So because of our, our budget reductions, we do have a hiring freeze in place that public safety is the, is the exception there and other sort of positions that are key. So we do have some, if you go to our website, there are some utility positions as well as some police positions that are open. Many delivery service charges, the restaurant or store commission that takes away all the profit. Most restaurants are offering their own delivery right now. Edith, you could probably comment on this, but I think we're sort of seeing a sort of both, you know, where DoorDash is being used and then some are just doing their own delivery service. Okay. I was recently told that the people here only passed the original marijuana law by about an equal number and not the bigger number of the state. I was recently told that the people here only passed the original marijuana law by about an equal number and not the bigger number of the state. Hmm. Let's see, so.
Christina?
Yeah.
I assume they're referring to the original state commission?
Yes.
Okay, so Prop 64 versus our own initiative. Yeah.
And I can't remember what the exact numbers were. It was not as high a percentage of the state. It was more than, you know, it was, it was more than 50%. It wasn't the 65% for the, that was statewide, but, but it was not 50/50. It was the majority did vote for it.
Thank you, Don. Okay, so we have Brittany Sherman, our C. Okay, so we have Brittany Sherman, our CEO of the Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. Many college students are home for the summer and empowering them to create a kind of community-led delivery program for curbside retailers and restaurants would keep them busy and save the retailers' restaurants on larger delivery costs. Win-win.
And gets the kids out of the house.
Aha, aha, smart, very smart. Okay, I don't see any open questions right now, nor do I see any hands raised. Carrie Wallace, we can go ahead and unmute the mic.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hey, great. Hey, so I was just listening to the earlier dialogue regarding the street diet. And so the Downtown Association, I'm a director with the Downtown Association. And so we're sending out a survey to get some, some feedback from our members regarding, regarding, you know, their, you know, their, their feelings about, about the street diet. And if I recall correctly, the last time that this came up, the, the residents were the ones that kind of, you know, really voiced their opinion and, and it had to do with all of the, you know, the, the major thoroughfare that, that Monterey Road offers. And it was, you know, the commuters that were, that were really concerned about the, 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 the street diet. It made a, it made a very, a very challenging, you know, it was very challenging for the commuters. And they were the ones that ultimately voiced their opinion and shut it down. So as we explore other options and we explore this again, knowing that that may be a roadblock. Dave mentioned side street closures. Is that a viable option? Is that something that we can go out to our association? We can go to our members and ask them, you know, what do you feel about this? Is this something, we know that we've, we've got some residents that are, you know, residents that maybe are pretty vocal and don't want to have any change. But, you know, if you, when you think about the Mushroom Mardi Gras, you think about Taste of Morgan Hill, all those side streets are closed down anyway. And then all you do is you show that, you know, you have a PG&E bill and they let you through. You can go to your home, there's no, and actually you don't have any parking problems. So it seems to me that that could be a viable option, knowing that what we're going to be up against are the commuters. Because the commuters need Monterey Highway and that's, you know, Monterey Road. And that's, knowing that that roadblock is down the road, are there other things that we should be considering?
So just, just to, just to kind of talk about the side streets, I, I think it's hard to categorize the side streets and just say, talk about the side streets. Because each one of those side streets has a distinct personality or something similar to that, right? Where you might close one side street, like you're saying, I'm going to close First Street and I only have a couple of businesses there. And then I, I have residents, residences the whole way down. So what does closing First Street get you? You know, if you're looking to expand spaces for business. So it's almost as if we need to look at each street and each street has, you know, what a different traffic control that would be required. Like, for example, First Street and Third Street don't have a, a full intersection where they meet Monterey Road that would require left turn lanes to be blocked to stop cars from going in. So each street is kind of its own, like a living animal where the circumstances would change. Some might be more conducive to others. So I really think we'd have to look at that. Now, when those side streets are closed for the major events, they're manned by people that are putting on the events. But that's for an event, not something that sits there permanently. If we're setting up and taking down traffic control, either as the Downtown Association doing it or the city doing it each day, there's a cost associated with that. And we have to look at those things too. So it's definitely something that, that's feasible to do. It's just, does it make sense? And how, and we're 100% open to looking at it and walking it through street by street to see what makes sense. But I don't think there's an easy answer to say, yes, this makes sense for every side street.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Carrie. Brittany has raised her hand, so she's with the chamber. And so if we can unmute her mic and then I think she has something to share, a question or comments. And then also in that, Brittany, we got a question about the college delivery, college student delivery program and who would cover the liability and maybe you want to address that in your remarks as well.
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Can anybody see me?
No.
Okay, good. Hi, everyone. Brittany Sherman, CEO, President, Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Christina, for giving me a moment just to give a quick update on what the chamber has going on. The comment about the college students was just, I've, I've been receiving a lot of emails from college students saying, we're home for the summer. We'd like a paid internship or something like Edith said, just to get us out of the house, something to do. So I feel like that might be a really good fit. What the liability looks like, I have no idea. I'm happy to research it. So with that, I'm happy to follow up on that. As far as what the chamber's been doing the last couple of weeks, I want to give a quick update on a survey that we sent out for the Friday Night Music Series. So right now, large events are not able to happen. We're crossing our fingers that they might starting July 10th, but you know, it's a pipe dream. So we decided in the meantime to send out a survey to the community, asking if they would attend a July 10th concert if they felt ready. We received 684 responses in seven days, which is a lot for us. 58% said, I am ready to attend July 10th. 14% said I might attend and 28% said I will not attend. We did leave a space for feedback and comments in there. Most of the comments we received for the I might attend category was I would attend based on what county health said was okay. And then the other ones that we received in the, in the no category for the most part were I'm in a high risk or age bracket where I don't feel comfortable coming out. So 58% yes, ready, ready to come back in the community and go to a live concert. The other, the other thing that we've been doing recently, we put out a petition to reopen Morgan Hill. We sent that out last week. We received 275 businesses signed on to that. I sent that out to Sarah Cody and the health officials as well as each of the individual supervisors. You already put, did a similar push a few days before that. So just really trying to express to them that some of our small businesses are really struggling and now they're at the point where they are actually closing up shop. And it's a fact, though, the health is a huge, huge portion of what we need to be following. There's also some adverse effects from the shelter in place for the business owners themselves, for their families, for their employees that has effects on them such as substance abuse, domestic violence, suicide attempts, all of those things kind of rope in. And I think we're so focused on the health right now, we don't really see those mitigating factors, but, but they are there. And so we did send that out just as a push for the community as a whole. The other thing we've been focusing on in the chamber is what we're calling a Fit Business Challenge. So every week for the month of May, we're challenging the business community to utilize this downtime to really focus on things such as updating their website, figuring out how to communicate better with their existing clients and the new clients, how to, how to effectively get on social media. So all of those things, we're kind of trying to tell them to take advantage of the time that they have now. Because we're all going to look back and say, what did we do with the 10 or the 12 or the 15 weeks? It went by so fast, but it not during the time did it feel that way? So that's, that's kind of what we have going on right now. Thank you, Christina, for giving me a few moments to give an update.
Brittany, thank you for, for giving that update. Thank you for what you do to help support our businesses. Chris from the group says, hi, Brittany, maybe consider streaming the live concert as well? And another comment from Chris, he DJs for the San Jose Sharks and can contribute for the break music while band set up. And his good friend is the organist for the Sharks as well. He's amazing and awesome live. We got another comment from Victoria says the chamber has been amazing.
Yay, thank you, thank you.
All right, Edith, help, help me solicit input from our attendees. So you're muted.
I was, I was afraid the kids weren't going to walk in on me again. We have quite a few folks. So for us, certainly, you know, when I was, when Brittany was chatting, we are so appreciative of the partnership that, that the chamber offers the city. Visit Morgan Hill, the Downtown Association, all those partners are so critical to do, expand the role of economic development. I really appreciate what they do and the focus that they have. I often think that the best thing that we, the city, can do is do the thing that we're supposed to do, which is the permitting, the rules, the regs and how to do them best, how to do them better than anybody else, how to do them faster, how to streamline them, how to make them as affordable and as business-friendly as possible. So for me, a lot of what I think about is the city, if we just run as, as, as lean mean of, of, and straightforward places we can, then organizations like the Downtown Association and the Chamber can do what they do best. And, and again, Brittany, we're so grateful for the outreach that you do for this small business community. So with that, I don't know if there's any additional comments or questions. It is 6:17. We do have, I was trying to put it on the chat, but I guess there's no chat and I don't get a chance to chime in on what the link to the city council's meeting page is. But certainly the team is here, ready to continue to take your feedback. We're trying to balance really the, the bandwidth that City Hall has. But what I'm always most excited about is people that push us to think really outside of the box and, and adapting to a, a whole new way. Somebody said, I think it was a question about the, the Monterey Road improvements, is that a temporary or a permanent solution? And, you know, that's one of the things that I've been really thinking about when it comes down to our new normal today. Do we think that the new normal is going to come and go? Or do we think that the new normal is now going to make us rethink the way we hold events from here on out? Is the new normal going to have us be always ready to, to, to spin on a dime if there's a pandemic? And, and the beauty of it is that we're learning so much right now. We're learning a lot of the hows. But I, I am thinking that a lot of what we do and discover might have to be part of what we go forward with. And maybe we don't always implement it, but we as a community may want to think about how to be able to do it over and over again and do it quickly. And, and also thinking that stuff takes money. So if, you know, the, to the extent that we can do it and do it right the first time and not mess around with it, I think that that is the best thing for the community. Maybe this is an opportunity for the rest of the folks to chime in. I know Leslie has had some conversations with community folks that have reached out to her and, and looking at things like what is the city doing on our own shopping, purchasing policies? What are the other things that we can do within our own buying power? So if the rest of the team that is on, on the call has any thoughts, any ideas, feel free to share them with, with us, with the group right now.
We do have Krista on from Visit Morgan Hill. So maybe Krista, if you want to kind of say a few words about what Visit Morgan Hill is up to right now and how you're partnering with the city?
Perfect. Have Krista, Krista can give us a plug on what she's doing and what are the ways that the community can engage with, with Visit Morgan Hill?
Yeah, so, you know, right now we are focused on assisting the City Economic Development Chamber, Downtown Association, Wineries Association. We've been partnering on distributing information to our different business segments. And so that has been keeping us very busy. Things have been changing rapidly and we were leveraging each other's networks to get the message out as wide as possible and to really, you know, try to get to all the restaurants, try to get to all the hotels. So that has been, you know, a primary focus. And we conducted several focus groups last week for Visit Morgan Hill amongst different business groups. So that is an effort for our strategic planning project. And that is something that we've been working on pretty much since I started in March. So that will be our guiding force for what Visit Morgan Hill is going to do in the short, middle and long term to promote Morgan Hill. And so, you know, the purpose of our organization is to bring overnight visitation, which is obviously not happening right now. So, you know, we are looking at short-term tactics and, and how we can try to generate, you know, positive support for our businesses, whether that's restaurants, retail, dining, personal services. We're, we're collecting a lot of that feedback through focus groups. So it's kind of a multi-layered approach because we have such a unique situation on our hands at the moment. As Edith shared earlier, we are distributing PPE to hospitality businesses that may need them. There have been, you know, issues with supply chains and people, you know, having trouble getting their hands on certain items that they want. So we do have a stock and we are happy to provide those to anyone who may need them. You know, even some kind of small relief to the businesses. And, you know, the reasoning behind this is that safe and comfortable welcoming messaging that not only staff feel safe, but patrons can feel safe as well. And I think I saw a comment in the chat about consistency in, in the experience. And, you know, for, for us organizations to get behind a campaign of the safe and welcoming experience, you know, I think we, we want to have that consistency and, you know, we're kind of waiting for that guidance as the shelter in place orders are, you know, updated. So again, that goes back to keeping an eye on the information, getting it distributed and just trying to be supportive wherever we can.
So Krista, yesterday at the council meeting, there were some ideas about promotions and kind of like trying to do, take advantage of the fact that we've all been home for months now to rediscover Morgan Hill. And what does that look like? And if you, if you were to get on a bike, where can you go? And so I was thinking about you, thinking that you can help us with some of that as part of your strategic plan and branding efforts that Visit Morgan Hill is going to do. So we'll be working.
Yeah.
Reaching out to you.
That's exciting stuff, yeah. Part of our focus groups, you know, after, after the city council meeting last night, you know, cycling's a big part of, of our city and our culture. And I think that, you know, a bicycle allows you to get around the city in a way that, you know, you can just, you don't have to be in one spot. You can go beyond downtown and, and out to some of the other experiences. And it's something different that, you know, locals, residents can enjoy. And that rediscovery, I think, is a really exciting concept, so.
So if people want to get engaged with Visit Morgan Hill and the tourism strategy, where can they find you?
So they can find us at visitmorganhill.org or you can email me directly. I can put my email address in the chat. And we also have an Instagram account. It's visitmohei. And that's where we're at at the moment. We're, we're in startup mode. So we're, we're putting these pieces of the puzzle together throughout this crisis. And we're, we're trying to be very smart and strategic with what we're doing, so.
Great. Krista, thank you so much. A couple of questions came up. It says, talk about being thrown into the deep end. Krista, we thank you for stepping up during this challenging time. So just a nice comment to you. Thank you, yes, what a time to jump in. Let's see. Are you going to advance visitmorganhill.org more money? And so how Visit Morgan Hill is funded is through a Tourism Business Improvement District. And so it is a 1.5% charge that goes on hotel stays. And that's basically how the, the T-bid gets its money and then that, you know, is part of Visit Morgan Hill. And yeah, so there's no planned increase, you know, from the city or budget appropriation above, beyond that, that one and a half percent. We have a comment listening in, heartened to see everyone lending a helping hand, the city, the chamber, the Downtown Association, the public. I guess the biggest question is what will work to jumpstart the economy in these times? We will go back to the table and brainstorm what it, what that is and come to the city for guidance and help with permits, et cetera. Maybe there will be a clear answer by next week. Thank you for hosting this. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, that was from Suman. How have restaurants and retailers in the city been doing? Are they struggling? Will we be seeing a vastly different downtown once we are all out of this? Edith?
You know, that's a really good question. Um, I don't know, um, well, the retailers have been absolutely struggling, right? They, they haven't even had a chance until this Friday to, to come out and do curbside pickup. The, the restaurants, uh, we've seen a range, um, on the survey, we're seeing, I don't know, responses that are down 30%, 50%. It really ranges. Some of our restaurants decided very quickly to close, they were not set up for a to-go setup. Um, and some of them are coming back slowly um, to, to offer to-go. So I think that there's quite a bit of a learning curve for folks. Tremendous pain. The amount of the California Restaurant Association, if you're interested, um, the, you can find the uh, presentation at choosemorganhill, uh, choosemorganhill.com backslash COVID-19 roundtables. There is a restaurant roundtable, um, and the California Restaurant Association representative talked about the amount of pain that is happening out there with a number of employees that are laid off, that are furloughed. And um, that's a big part of our workforce. And you know, just recognizing that on a to-go uh, sort of workforce, you are reducing uh, a lot of your waitstaff. And um, so it's, it's been very difficult. And yes, I, I do expect that unfortunately, uh, the landscape is going to be different um, when we come back out of this.
Edith, um, it's Leslie. I was going to suggest that you um, take this opportunity to also let people know uh, about the concentrated efforts that city, chamber, Visit Morgan Hill have made to reach out to many, many businesses, not just small businesses, not just hotels, but throughout the community and kind of stay in touch with them and ask them how they're doing and kind of taking the pulse of the community.
Absolutely. So um, as far as reaching out to the businesses, as Krista had mentioned, we are all capitalizing on each other's net works. And uh, the first thing that we did when, when this started is uh, immediately as a group, we put together a survey that we deployed right away uh, to all the businesses. Uh, we used our email databases that we have. Then the city sent an actual postcard to anybody that has a business license, so they receive a postcard, so that the business community can do two things. One, find and engage with us on the survey and two, go to the page that has all this information that we have been producing. So we have this long list of information for employees, employers, uh, financial resources, technical resources, and, and we've been uh, updating that information. John Lang has been doing a great job with that. In addition to, to the surveys, we've also um, identified uh, who are the largest employers in the city, who are the largest sales tax generators, so that we can make a phone call to those companies and, and also reach out to them personally. We heard from them um, as well, uh, different dynamics for different companies than, than the small businesses. And then uh, we've been doing uh, newsletters, trying to pare down the amount of information that is out there and kind of provide a more bite size uh, for the business community. So we've already issued four newsletters with resources and information. Right now, our most recent newsletter, I should say this so the, our business partners can help us get this out. Our most recent newsletter that we send out has the link to the Silicon Valley Strong Small Business Survey. And that's a regional effort and I'm really hoping that, that South County could be heard through this survey. So I'm really hoping we can push it out to the businesses and, and make sure that, that we are represented.
Thank you, Edith. So I believe it's 6:30. So our next town hall, as mentioned, is going to be talking, um, the, you know, for most of the time about the Monterey Road improvements, uh, leading up to having that council discussion on June 3rd. So anything further before we close? Edith, any final closing remarks?
Thank you for joining us today.
Good night, everyone.